And that would be John Olson and Timothy Pierce. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it very much. And we have Patsy Smith, who was the founder of the Village of Campeton Hills. She did a great job. Yep, thank you for being here.
Tim just ran down the hallway to get something.
Okay. And Tracy's back.
Should I give permission to include them?
We'll do the motion when she gets it all called into order.
Yeah, okay. We will do roll call with our new members. Tracy?
Call the meeting to order.
We'll call the meeting to order.
Trustee Benetti?
Here.
Trustee Botner is absent. Trustee Burson?
Here.
Trustee Mallett?
Present.
Trustee Muir?
Oh, it's not. Present.
Trustee Hapsenberger?
Here.
And President Winicki?
Present. Okay. Well, move. You want to get Nick in or go to public comments first?
See if there's any public comments.
Uh, I think we have one public comment. Um, Tom Williams? Yep, podium's yours. Kim, can you? Kim's so good at it. Never.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to just take a moment to sincerely thank the village president, Barbara Winicki, the Board of Trustees, dedicated administration, Chief Levann, for the opportunity to serve the Village of Campeton Hills, a place I've proudly called home for 30 years. Becoming a trustee was truly a humbling and eye-opening experience. Making the shift from resident to board member has given me a new appreciation for the hard work and collaboration and the care that goes into taking, making the village strong and moving in the right direction. Over the last three years, I've witnessed, from what I've learned on the board, real and positive progress. It feels like there's enhanced professionalism, community involvement, and important strides in public safety, infrastructure, and long-term strategic planning. These improvements are meaningful and they reflect the collective dedication of everyone in this room and past board members. What makes this progress even more impressive is that it's accomplished on a shoestring budget to other villages in the area. It speaks volumes about the resourcefulness and the commitment of our leadership staff, volunteer members, doing more with less without compromising the character, the quality of this village. And by the way, just officially, and I've told everyone that lives by me, we do not collect property taxes. Can I say that 100 million more times? Everybody go and tell all your friends that the village does not collect property taxes because I hear that all the time. And what makes it even more special is that we've done it while staying true to who we are, preserving the rural character, the nature, the natural beauty, the small-town spirit that makes Campeton Hills such a unique and treasured place to live. I truly believe and I want Campeton Hills to continue to become the best place it's ever been. With passion and giftedness of the new board members and the experienced leadership of the current team and the continued involvement of our volunteer residents who are on all our boards, we are on a strong and promising path forward. We are building a future that honors our past, strengthens our present, and sets us up for being one of the great places to live, not only in King County, in my opinion, but across the state of Illinois. And I am honored to have been able to share this journey with all of you. And I really want to start off, and I really wanted to start this board meeting off with a positive heartfelt comment, which I have learned, being on the board, that is a very rare thing. So the job is not easy. I've done it. And, uh, but thank you. And as a citizen of Campeton Hills, I say, get to work. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Tom.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we'll talk. Okay. All right, um, let's see. I'll entertain a motion to include Nick Botner in our discussion, in our public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Burson, second by Mallett. Roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner? And, okay. Trustee Muir?
Aye.
And Trustee Hapsenberger?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, um, our village attorney will swear all who would like to speak regarding, in regards to the budget. So, uh, would you please stand if you have comments regarding the budget?
Okay.
Okay.
And Chief and Administrator Ruin, if you could raise your hands as well. Also Treasurer McPhillips?
Actually, the finance committee.
Just raise your right hand.
Anyone who's going to speak during the budget presentation, we might as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Motion to open the public hearing on the village's proposal fiscal year budget, May 1, 2025 through April 30, 2026 annual budget. May I, I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mike Mallett?
I'll second.
Second by Kim Muir. Roll call.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner? Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Hapsenberger?
Aye.
All righty, thank you. Go on to the presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to the presentation, and that'll be Timothy McPhillips. And I believe Mark, too. Okay. I don't think it's on.
Put a new microphone into budget.
There you go.
Hello, everybody. Uh, for those that don't know me, I'm Tim McPhillips. I'm the treasurer of the village. And for those that don't know, I believe that by statute, the village has to pass a, excuse me, an ordinance for the budget by April 30. I'll count on the village attorney to correct me if that's inaccurate. And for the public consumption, if you don't know, we have presented a preliminary budget to the board last meeting. And that budget had a deficit of $457,000 approximately. The Finance Committee has revised the recommended budget with some cuts. That second version has a deficit of $59,000 approximately. The changes that have been made to the budget, and the board already has this information, I emailed them. But for public consumption, the changes that have been made to the budget was to cut another $90,000 from legal, $60,000 of capital expenditures for a police vehicle, another $19,000 for a speed sign to indicate drivers, what speed they were going as they drive by. That's a safety concern. Another $125,000 in contingency and an extra $40,000 in interest income that we believe we can earn throughout the fiscal year. So with that being said, I'd like to also put an additional framework around this budget for not only the public, but also the trustees. You did receive the fiscal year '24 audit that the Finance Committee recommended that the board approved. In the first week of May, the, a partner from the law firm, Lauterbach &amp; Amin, will be here to discuss any questions the board has on that audit. And you have received that audit. And by "you" received the audit, I meant the board. It is not available for public consumption yet. In that audit, um, the board, the village has approximately $5,996,000 available, um, funds available. For fiscal year '25 estimate, which is on the draft you received in the budget, we anticipate a $403,000 deficit. So what that means going into fiscal year '26, we anticipate about $5,592,000 available in cash to the village. That's essentially your reserve. What does that mean? That means in the 17 years, since the village has been around, you've been good stewards of the resources available to the village, and you've pretty much accrued about $5.5 million in excess taxes. So with that being said, I want to talk specifically about the second draft of the budget. I'm just going to, this is very high level. I'm not going to go into too much detail unless obviously you have questions. Referring to, and this is available to public consumption, unfortunately only online. If you look at the very last page, what I want to speak to is the overall budgeted general fund expenditure. That is line 272. The column all the way to the right represents the proposed fiscal year budget. General fund expenditure is at $3,180,000. And that's an important number. I'm going to kind of refer to that quite a bit over the next few minutes. I'm then gonna, I'm then gonna ask you to refer to page 5 of 9, line 136. That is police salaries. For the budget, it is $1,366,000. I provided you documentation last month on how I obtained that number. But what is important is if you take that $1,366 divided by the $3.18 million in total general fund expenditures, you come up with 43%. So 43% of the general fund expenditures is strictly for police salaries. If you look at the healthcare for both the general, I'm sorry, for general administration and the police department, that is about 9% of the total general fund expenditures. If you continue down that line after the police salaries to line, um, 147, retirement contribution, that is what we are paying to the police pension fund. By statute, we have to pay that. We can't shortchange that if we wanted to. We have to pay that. Dispatch, $95,957. We really have no say in that. We have an agreement with, I'll let the police chief speak to that, but that is by contract. We have to pay that amount. Another large item is our insurance through RMA. We have an agreement with RMA, and that's pretty much what we have to pay. The point being is there's very little leverage we have here to cut out expenses that aren't already kind of fixed. So with that being said, I will ask you to refer back to the very last page again. And that will take you again to the village wide revenue. That's line 269, of $4.2 million. Again, a lot of that revenue, we don't control. That is coming from the state. It's based on our population, which is only going to change every 10 years based on the census. The village-wide expenses, I think that is where the board probably will have the most input on trying to get us to a zero-deficit budget, which would be represented on line 283. And that's really all I have, unless you have any other questions. I really think for the board at this point, it's really a matter of, do you want to go somewhere between the original budget of a deficit of approximately $457,000 or closer to a zero-deficit, which is still $60,000? Those are kind of the choices before the board. And that's it.
Before we start opening it up to the public?
I'm sorry. Before we open it up to the public, we do have members of the Finance Committee that have served for, I think in Tim's case, since the inception, and John for over a decade. If you want to just give some of your insights into the process you've seen over the years, John, do you want to add anything?
Or emphasize?
Well, thank you. Realistically, we have been very fiscally conservative out here. For the longest time, we built in a contingency in our budget. We basically budgeted revenue at 95%. And that was done on purpose. We have seen that gap between revenue and expenses shrink, and we need to address it in the future. I think for the last couple of years, we became enamored with roads. And we lost focus, quite honestly. And I think we need to go back to have focus to look at operating expenses. One of the things that we, we've talked about on the Finance Committee is that we need to become much more strategic. We don't have a three-year plan or a five-year plan. We need a roadmap to where we're going. And these are projects that we, as the Finance Committee, will step up to the plate if the board wants us to do that. So. We think it's important that we get closer to zero deficit on our budget. And that's why we propose the cuts. So those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you, John. Tim, would you like to make comments as well? Tim Pierce?
How are we going to get more revenue?
Property tax. No, I'm joking. John was very elegant in what he said, and I think most of this board fully recognize that the city has been very prudent over the years, including making it through COVID without a deficit, which was a anomaly in itself. And I thank the board for that fiscal responsibility. We're all residents of this community. And each one of us partakes in the services that are provided by this board for this community, including our police department, which is outstanding. But we're at that place where we don't have the ability to incur taxation, yet our expenses continue to go up. The last two years, we ran a deficit, right? There's things there that were managed, things we had to get through. But obviously, everyone understands, and I know this is a fiscally responsible board, we can't continue to run a deficit. So we've had to make some cuts. As a matter of fact, and I'll say this to the chief, I don't recall once where we've ever had to make any cut to any of the police recommended budgets served each year. This was the only opportunity that we had, in our opinion, to get to a fiscally neutral budget this year. Going forward, and I know Tim has addressed this in a memo, we do have options to increase some, or generate some additional revenue. And I think it's prudent. I think it's almost, it's fiscally responsible to consider raising those revenues going forward. And there'll be more discussion on that, on the specifics. We have a very limited opportunity. But I do not see how this community can move forward without depleting our reserves over time. I don't see how this community could go forward and maintain a balanced budget without generating additional revenues. Granted, we don't have taxing authority, but I just urge you, when that conversation comes up, to consider it seriously and know that as a Finance Committee, we have struggled and struggled and struggled to never, ever come to this board and recommend that we increase our revenue through our charter. And we're at that stage now where we don't see any other opportunity. And I think it'd be fiscally irresponsible if we don't consider it in great detail. With that, I thank the board again for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. All right, Patsy, I think you got sworn in as well.
First, I would like to thank the Finance Committee, the treasurer, and the boards over the years for continuing for us to be fiscally responsible. That's one of the commitments we made to our community when we incorporated. And, um, and sometimes you have to do without something if you can't make it work. But I'm personally disappointed that we have a $59,000 deficit. And before you pass it, I would like to hope that maybe you can look at this with a more fine-tooth comb. I would think that you ought to be able to make adjustments somewhere. But one question I have is I can't reproduce your income estimates. Did you use the IML?
I did.
Like of 178.67?
I don't have those here in front of me, but.
I mean, I printed it out today.
I gave you the IML magazine.
I haven't. I printed it out and I calculated it, and I come up with a lower, a higher number than you had. And then on use tax, I came up with a number that was 200,000 more. So anyway, I just would curious and would like to make sure I don't have a mistake in my numbers. But, you know.
Patsy, what number did you use as population?
I used 178. I just printed this out.
No, no, what census population?
10,885.
That's, that's our number. That's our number.
Because I looked it up. Right, I looked it up on the Illinois Department of Revenue site to verify that's what you're getting paid for.
Yes.
So anyway, um, so anyway, I'd like to make sure myself that I can reconcile the income estimates because I thought, well, maybe you did a 90% reduction because I knew we used to do 95. So anyway, I, I just would like to do that for myself. But, um, there are a couple of things that I think the village should be looking at to generate revenue or to keep expenses down. One, on the expense side, I have more than once recommended to a number of people to, to change your subdivision ordinance. Any new subdivision should be required to maintain local roads through an SSA. It's kind of a no-brainer, you know? I mean, that's our biggest financial pressure is roads. But you can get the income from the revenue of the people. And if you have the SSA in place before somebody files a petition or you agree to an annexation agreement, then that expense is gone. Kind of easy, you know? I mean, so let's look at that now. That's one suggestion I make. Another suggestion is you've got five more years till the census, 2030. We did a special census when we incorporated, and we incorporated in '07. So we did it right away because we needed money so bad that we wanted to make sure everybody was counted. Well, you've got five more years. Somebody should be running the numbers on the cost of the special census versus the income because you have to have permits for Norton Lake that have been given since 2020. So all you need to do is look at the number of occupancy permits that have been issued from 2020, you know, calculate the estimated number of homes based on the school factor, and then compare that to the cost and project it out. That's another easy way to get money.
And that has been brought up by the, I think, trustee Burson last fall. We looked at the Census Bureau to do that, and we wanted to just do Norton Lakes, not the entire village.
No, you can do that.
They, they've changed the rules.
Oh, come on.
They make you do the entire town, and therefore the cost effect of the.
Yeah, they used to let us do just certain areas.
No, they used to do by census tract, numbers that you chose as a village, and then you only pay for that.
Right, right. Right, right. Yeah, well, I wasn't aware that that had, that is unfortunate because that helped us a lot. But, um.
I just want to add, Patsy, that it is in our future plans to create SSAs for any new subdivision coming in.
Yeah, but if you need to get it in your subdivision ordinance, you've got to pass the subdivision ordinance. Because if it's not in there and somebody files a petition, guess what? You're paying for the roads, unless you can legally.
It's a good suggestion.
Turn down the thing.
Well, in a pre-annexation agreement or annexation agreement with a builder, you can force it.
I, I know. It's negotiable, but I'm just saying, it's more prudent to have it in your ordinance. Then it doesn't matter whether you can get it negotiated or not.
Yeah, no, we'll do that. That's a good suggestion.
And then, I, I mean, I don't really want to offend the police department because they've been a great asset. But when we incorporated, Keith Rippey did our incorporation budget, and he used to be the chief of police, I think in Joliet. But anyway, he said to me, and he said, "Don't ever forget this." And he said, "Every police department is going to tell you they need this and this, and the latest of this and the latest of that." And he said, "It's not true. Just always remember that." So I would just like to, and it sounds like you've already cut a few things out of your budget. But I mean, we operated with used old police cars for a long time, and, you know, it got the job done. It wasn't great. But there must be some creative ways to try to, but it does look like, you know, you've got some fixed revenues that you're, you know, you have to deal with with the dispatch and things like that. But, but I, I'll go with Timothy to make sure I understand some of the things. I just, one question I had was the transportation renewal fund, and maybe you know, is that the every-five-year thing? So this just happens to be the year we get that revenue? Woo-hoo. Was that in the, was that in here? I'm not sure I saw it. Did you budget for that?
Transportation revenue.
It's every five years. It's on the IML sheet. So I just made you another, um, well, where is it? Another 2317 per capita. So. So you might want to add that to your budget because it was listed in the IML thing. So, there you go. I helped with your 59,000.
Thank you, Patsy. I just want to add.
Tim, look at line 213, Tim, and see if you did adjust that number.
Yeah, and I just want to add that our police department, we have probably the worst, the best chief we could ever ask for. And he very carefully looks at all the numbers and everything. I mean, he spends a lot of time here and is very engaged and so.
Right.
Transportation revenue.
It's line 213, Tim. I don't know if we did an adjustment on that. I don't recall that discussion.
I, I use the IML number. If there's an additional amount to that, I'm not aware of it. So, I mean, I, I will say this to the board. As I stated in my opening remarks, you have a statutory obligation to pass an ordinance for a budget by the end of the month. It does not have to be today. If there are additional questions you have beyond today, I'll be more than happy to sit down with anyone, especially the newer members. I will say this, this is a pretty vanilla budget. It's really not complex. This village has the luxury of having a pretty hefty reserve relative to its overall expenditures. Many, many villages have nothing near that luxury. But I, I would like to add one other thing that I would like to say as a, someone who has a career outside of public finance, and that is in public safety. And there is a saying in Chicago, actually, my father heard it back when he was in the fire academy 60 years ago this month. And it's, uh, it's called telegraph, telephone, tell a fireman. You tell a fireman something, it will get out there faster than if you use a telegraph or a telephone. Firemen are notoriously gossipy. Next, after firemen, are policemen. A very close second. And.
And which group always keeps their mouth shut?
Yeah.
Public works.
There you go. And, and the reason I say this is because Campeton Hills is considered a very good place to work, I believe, by Chicago policemen I've spoken to. But, you know, they talk. And there's an article in Today's Tribune about how difficult it is to get policemen. And they're poaching policemen from one force to another. The Tribune article specifically mentions Winnetka. And they cannot get police officers starting, starting at $85,000. So, I mean.
We have a good team. We definitely.
So when these policemen talk to each other, we want them to be saying that Campeton Hills is a good place to work.
That's right.
And that's all I'll say.
Sure, go ahead.
Speaking of police, um, I saw on the tape that you.
Go on the mic. Go to the mic, Patsy.
I saw in the tape that you guys are putting somebody through the police academy. And we did that when I was in office. And my suggestion, and I would think maybe you could get people to do this, because the one we paid for to go through academy, it was only here for a short period of time and then went to work for King County. I don't, and I would assume you could have them sign a waiver that if they're not here, like for five years, and they have to pay you back?
Yeah, we have a waiver for a two-year agreement at 100%.
Okay. Okay, good, because that's my suggestion.
He's got it.
And to, looking at it, Tim, just roughly, rough math, on line 213, if we added in the, that transportation that Patsy and Mike Mallett were speaking of, we could reduce our, but it would be a $36,000 deficit now with that uptick of money, revenue. So we're down to, from 57, it's roughly, now the new number's 36.
Keep talking.
It's not too, 178.27 for income tax, which is the IML estimate. Like 10,888.5, I come up with 100 million dollars. And you could still take a 95% of that, still a million dollars, I'd go, unless I got the number.
I'm not taking 95% anymore.
No, but at 100%, then you've got 158,000 more. The other estimate, it's what I'm saying.
Well, does anybody else have public comments regarding the budget that were sworn in? Okay, we'll go to discussion now.
And, and you know what? We'll take Patsy's challenge to go back to the IML magazine and, because those are what IDOR gives out for municipalities across the state of Illinois. And we'll look at our 10,885 census, and we'll run the numbers again.
Okay.
Before we, because we. tonight, and we'd continue this until the 29th, next Tuesday. So any questions you might have between now and next week, you could reach out to myself or Tim. We could answer those and be ready for a more robust discussion next week. To include, we'll check our numbers. I'm glad they're not overestimated. I'd rather be under than over. Yeah. All right. We'll recheck those numbers.
All right. Let's move into questions or discussions, board discussions regarding the budget. Janet, go ahead.
I think we want to get done with the public hearing first.
We need to close the public hearing.
Oh, all right. No other... I'm sorry, Janet, hang in there. Nobody else wants to speak for public hearing? Okay, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Who was that? Burson, second by Mallett. Roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Got everyone.
Trustee Muir?
Aye.
Trustee Happensatru?
Aye.
And Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to questions from the board.
Do you want to let Nick, do you want to go first, or do you want to go last?
Yeah.
Just, just in the nature of Nick being his communication device and mine are linked, can we let Tim, Nick go first to trustees? Right, go ahead, Nick.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Once, when I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting on the call, so I do want to tell all our newly sworn-in trustees, congratulations, I'm looking forward to serving with you. Moving on to budget items, I have three things I'd like to hit on right off the bat. One, line 247 and 248, let's see, that is the capital fund revenues. I was curious why that was, there was no projected revenue in that field for 2026. We had $80,758 in 2025 actual. I'm sure there's an easy explanation, but...
Yeah, jump on it.
Is the mic on? Yeah.
So I guess this would be directed for Treasurer McPhillips?
Yes. So for fiscal '26, we have no transfers in because we removed any expenditures for the capital fund, and that, those expenditures were going to be the police department vehicle and the speed sign for the roads.
Okay. That was an easy enough one. On line 65, the interest for 2026 went from 150 to 200,000 from draft one to draft two. I just wanted to make sure these were, I mean, and I'm sure they are, but that 150,000 switching to 200,000, what was the reason that it didn't start out at 200,000? I mean, are we, where is the extra $50,000 coming from? I guess this week, I'm less concerned about expenses, and now, you know, kind of the concern has shifted to revenues.
Sure. My initial estimate intentionally was very conservative. When I met with the finance committee, we walked through how I got to it. I told them it was conservative. They were looking to close the gap, so we took what we estimated to be the principal beginning of the fiscal year, and we applied what we thought we would get through the Illinois funds, and then we just trued it up.
Okay, so we think that's a realistic number, the 200,000? And then, last question for now, I'm curious, in revenues anywhere, why we don't take into account any sort of grant funding? Nowhere in here is there any line item that takes into account grants. We were pretty successful in 2025. I mean, the police department definitely took the lead, the technology committee was getting involved, roadwork. I mean, we really capitalized on grant funding. It seems like it's already a pretty big part of our operations, but it's not taken into account, you know, it's not in the budget at all. I was just curious if there's a reason why that's not included in the budget.
Well, it's more on a sense of being conservative, because most of the grants we're not going to hear back from. We're not going to hear back from until June, July, August, and the one in the road, we...
Cost share.
There's a cost share with the feds on, and I've got a separate sheet that you're not seeing, but Mike, you might be able to refresh somebody's memory on the Danker, Brown...
Town Hall.
Town Hall and Camden Hills Road. That's about a $4 million rough number of cost, and our cost share is $1 million. We could have put $3 million of grant money for that road, and that would be correct, but the reality is, we're netting out, it's costing us about 1.1 million to pave those four roads. But the total cost is over $4 million. So we could have done that, but I think it artificially makes it look like we have revenue that we really wouldn't have on that, for a good example. And we are going to have to true up the MFT number to reflect a 600,000 out of the general fund reserve and bring that down by 600,000 on this MFT budget. It's not reflected there, and that's why I put that hand out, especially for Frank and Therese that weren't part of those discussions last summer and last fall. We've already committed to doing this project, and it's actually been awarded through the Kane County bypass list, and that, that Mike can go into great detail. But then there's four other grants that are pending, mostly in the police department. They're substantial, but we're not going to know till summer if we're going to receive those. And in the tech side, I can't project that we're going to win on any of these. That's why I didn't put a number in. If it does happen, it'll be a net gain some point between June and October. But we didn't project it, because the only one I know we're going to get is $35,000 of DECO money that is, thanks to the efforts of Agastey, Representative Agastey and Senator DeWitt, made a modification for lead piping, DECO money. Since we don't have a water sewer plant, we've never received any DECO money, they made an effort, and we're going to, basically, they allowed Camden Hills only, and the whole state, to use our future road project this summer to be eligible for 35,000. That one I could put in, because I just heard today back from Chuck, Chuck, that we got 35,000, but it's really going to go to that 1.1 million cost for the roads, so it'll reduce that by 35,000. So I don't think that really changed our net position, because that's in the roads, folks. So it's not into your...
All right.
Okay, you were excited for a second, but it's reflective, it'll be reflected in that, in that. So the rest of those, I think as we get them throughout the summer answers, and the chief, you could probably list them off in the numbers, that, especially the one that would pay for staffing, I think if you'd explain that to the board, that'd be exciting, but we can't count on it.
Can, can I respond?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, good. My thought is, with having that, is this is also a policy document, of course, and right now, I mean, it really reads as if the village does not, does not take grants into account in their finances. And I think that it needs to be on our budget policy document that grants and grant funding are a big part, are a huge resource for us. I mean, right now, they're not even taking into account, it's kind of like we could get them or we could not get them. I think that if the grant, if they're on here as a line item, it puts the pressure on the village, that we really need to take this even more seriously than we already are. It just puts pressure on everybody to get out and get the grants. So I'd be curious what the rest of the board thinks about that. I'm sure they have other ideas as well.
Nick, Nick, you could put me in a room on a black site in Egypt and lay out torture instruments, and you'd put no more pressure on me to get this money. We've submitted four of the grants, and it's outside our purview whether they're going to be awarded. They really are. I, I mean, we could list them all next meeting, so you saw what's been applied for in the dollar amounts, and then you can make a decision as a board to say, add that in, but I think it could artificially raise revenues that won't materialize. But you can make that policy decision, and we will work with the police department and put those all together, as well as the, the road project, Mike, and show that we got $3 million federal, because each of those roads are 70%, one of them is 80% funded by federal dollars. But we're doing it at a much more expensive standard than we normally do, too. So we should, we can go into great detail on those at the next, on the 29th. Would that be acceptable, Nick? Is what you want?
I would, I would love regular updates on our grants, 100%. I mean, I think that's a great start. I still believe that we do need to incorporate this somehow into our revenue on the budget.
And Chief, Chief can jump in here. He's got it on his police staff report, actually.
Yeah, it was going to be an update on the monthly report, but I'll just give this portion of it now. So last week, the department received $9,411.60. It was for the grant I applied for last year. It was through ILEUS and the Illinois Criminal Justice Authority. That was to replace our old Taser 7s that are past a five-year warranty. They're no longer covered, they're outdated. So with that $9,411.60, we got three brand-new Taser 10s, all the cartridges, certification training, and the training suit. May 9th, Axon will be here at the station completing our instructor certification, and that will be out. So that grant has been paid in full and is closed on the police department end. The check has been submitted to, I think, Treasurer McPhillips. I gave it to Michelle. So that grant is closed. We're still waiting for a substantial grant that Christina completed and filed. It's in the amount of $650,000. It's through ILEUSBY. It's a two-year grant. It's a retention and recruitment grant for officers. So what it does, it breaks it down into two years. So it'd be budget year '25, '26, then '26, '27, at approximately $325,000 each budget year, then tension is, attention is to cover two officers' salaries, benefits, et cetera. We should know, we, here's a problem, we're talking about grants. We don't know if we're going to get grants. Do we have a good chance of getting this one? Absolutely, because of our community, our budget isn't as strong as some of the larger ones, so there's a good chance, we're just not 100%. ILEUSBY will let us know the beginning of June if we are awarded that grant. So that'd be a big one. The other one that is out now and will be filled in June is our Body Cam and Storage Grant, which is also through ILEUSBY. That is roughly about $36,000, which goes to our Technology Fund. Again, June beginning is the awarding period. We've received this previously years ago, so we have a good chance of getting it, just can't guarantee that we will get it until ILEUSBY lets us know. And finally, we submitted the Kane County Riverboat Grant, Christina did. That was to help with our IT and computer upgrades. I had zero faith we would get this grant, because many people have tried, but surprisingly, they reached back out, they said, "Could you make one correction for us? It's well within the limits that most people ask for." We made that correction to it. What the correction was, we had to take off, any work that we did present going forward is covered. If we bought something previously before submitting the grant, that is not covered. So we had to remove, which Trustee Muir helped with this, we had to remove the server part of it, but it still put us, I think, in the 20, mid-20 range. So hopefully, we'll hear back from that, and hopefully, we'll get it, because they said that was the one correction that we needed. So that's it grant-wise on my end.
The speed trailer, that was, that one, what was, what grant did we apply for that? That was 15 or...
Yeah, that ties in though to the budget thing. So we applied for the grant previously, they'd cover 50% of it. It's ComEd. We have a great relationship with ComEd. We recently won the Holiday Light Grant, that helped us do the trees and that. Pretty confident in it, but the deal is that June is obviously when they're going to announce it, it's a 50-50 match. So if ComEd says, "Yes, we'll give you the $10,000 towards the speed trailer," the village is going to be responsible for the other $10,000 on it.
Yep. So you see, we can give that, put that list that the chief has got in his report, and we'll just add the thing from Chuck that Christina just got back today, that they approved that for the road, and we'll put that as an attachment for grants, if that's the will of the board to show in a documentation form what we applied for and what they could be, and then we'll just await June for the result. I mean, it's, I just caution that we don't want to say that we're now plus money because of that, because it goes, you know, you'll have to make that decision on how you want us to, because that could show us having a very net positive view, and we don't know till mid to late June that those dollars are coming in. So we can give that to you as a full report to all of you and put it in, and then you decide on the 29th whether to include it. I just caution that it would give a, kind of a rosy view of our revenues, potentially.
Village President, would you mind if I asked the police chief a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Chief, if, I'm trying to recall a conversation we had a few months ago, but I do recall there was a grant that either you thought it wasn't a good grant, or some people you had spoken to in some classes you had taken, that it might have provided some money, but there were a lot of strings attached, it was very onerous, and it put us on the hook for a lot of expenditures for many years after we received the original money. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, when we looked at the recruitment and retention grant that's out there, there was two. You can go federal, like through the cops program, you can go state with ILEUSBY. If you go federal with any other grants, the red tape is very, very long, there's many requirements, you're on the hook for a lot, so what you think is a good amount of money may necessarily not be that great amount of money. ILEUSBY is no strings attached, and all their, if it's the camera grant, if it's the recruitment retention, it's 100% funded. If you get it, great, you get those funds. If you don't, I would prefer to stay away as much as possible from, like, cop program, the federal grant, like, if there's one that's good out there, like, we'll definitely apply for it. There is a lot that is attached to the federal-funded programs for police. ILEUSBY is doing a good job right now, putting good grants out there, that's zero contribution, pretty straightforward, so that was the difference in the two.
Yeah, and a lot of villages across the metro, across the country, applied for cops more grants back in the 90s, and it, they paid you over three years to add personnel to your police, and then they did it for fire. The backend string was, you got three years funding, and if you tried to do a manpower reduction, you had to pay the money back to the feds. So it, it was like a way, and then 2008 hit a lot of communities, and they had to make cuts, but they had these federal dollars that they couldn't make cuts in the public safety arena, which were very expensive employees. So that's a good example of what can happen in federal grant money.
Go ahead, Janet.
I don't, I don't think we're unaware that there are different kinds of grants, and so when we are talking about federal highway grants on secondary roads that we would never otherwise have done the work for ourselves, for example, like the four grants, the KKCOM grants, then it doesn't make sense for us to do this handstand and cartwheel business of putting it in the budget and back 70% of it out and, and then leave our match. I think the way that you're doing it is fine. I think that's a completely different kind of grant than some of these other miscellaneous grants that we're, that we're talking about, that don't necessarily have a match associated with them. It's just free money, and some of it you get, some of it you don't. And, and so to the extent that there are grants that have match... And, and so to the extent that there are grants that have matches associated with them, strings attached, then we're well advised to be careful about that. But to, to avoid putting the, a revenue line item in for these other miscellaneous grants, especially since we've heard that we've got tens of thousands of dollars of this has come in, you know, without us even realizing it apparently, which is great, fantastic, right? And hopefully, there'll be more. I feel that it's like a lot of other revenue items in our budget. The large items, the MFT and the sales tax and all that, it's a calculation. We know what it is, right? But when we throw a number on the budget for fines or we throw a number in the budget for building and zoning revenue or something, especially with the changes going on with Norton Lakes shutting down and so forth, it's kind of a swag. We don't really know what it's going to be. And so we don't feel bad about that. We acknowledge that some of these numbers are kind of swags and there's going to be some variation. And so to me, if I'm hearing, I think, even though I think one of those grants is technically in this prior budget year, right? Not in the '25, '26 budget year.
That's correct.
They're clearly closed out.
Right. But it's good work nonetheless. And so it makes our position for last year a little better and I'm sure improves our cash position regardless of what year you put it in. So like, I mean, I was going to suggest that we throw like 100 grand in as a, as a, you know, proposed, you know, hopeful grant, you know, revenue number and we work toward it. And like any other number we have on our, on our budget, we'd like to have backup for it. So if we can put together a schedule and say, we've applied for these various different grants like you're able to do and there's other grants I think we can work for, toward in the future. I just feel like we would be able to get to a number that we would be pretty comfortable that we've got a good chance of getting and include that in our budget. So we're not talking, from my mind, about including these millions of dollars for the roads that to Mark's point, don't really, it's not really our revenue. But for the money that you're getting, you know, trying to get grants for us, I mean, it's, you know, it's straight, straight to the top line, right? And so I think if we, I don't, I wouldn't want to speculate on the ILESP one. That's big money. But the other little ones that you've had such success with, for us to be able to throw down some sort of reasonable number that we're kind of trying to work to? I mean, if you don't get there, nobody's penalized.
So we'll just basically take that report that Christina worked for the chief and I today on and give that to you and then you can, next meeting, say 2,000 or you can say 200,000 based on our best estimate of success. And we can put that in and, but I just caution you, it could show that we have a very positive bottom line that I might not, and it's outside everybody's control. As long as we're aware of that, that's fine.
Yeah, I would suggest all the trustees keep their ear to the ground on future grants, not just police grants, but there are other ones that are.
Yeah, there are various other ones.
And a grant writer, I mean, it, your grant application has to be absolutely perfect when it's submitted. And it's usually a regular grant writer that does the grant writing and we're lucky to have Christine. So maybe perhaps one of the trustees would like to take a class at grant writing and become, yeah, that would be awesome. That's another, another way to look at it.
And just so you know, Christina and I've had to do our budget line item over a couple of times for every one of those grants. Because they get this early submittal and they will work with us to say, often where we're deficient and challenges to change something to make our grant successful. They didn't used to do that in the past, but the state of Illinois types are working with this. Federally, you, you get one shot. You put it in.
That's right.
It's one and done.
That's right.
Because it's such a large system. But with the state on each of these, we've had to make adjustments.
Okay, Mike and then?
I would like to continue with something else on the revenue side, if I may. There was a question raised and public comment about the factor that's being used for MFT and also for sales tax. And I think Mark had addressed it with MFT a little bit, but not the factor itself. What we have in here is 2108 instead of, I think you had 2317. So there does seem to be a discrepancy there. And then on the general fund revenues for local sales tax, for, for the, for the prior one, let me find it. Hold on a second.
You're talking line 25 or?
I'm, I was, I was originally talking about the MFT number, right? So.
It's the back page.
It's page nine and nine.
So that is line 213. And so then the factor we have here is 2108 times our population. I understand, but so, so this number perhaps bears some reconsideration. And I think Mark mentioned that is 30-some thousand dollars. And so with that good news and some of the chief's good news, I think our finance committee should be happy because I think we have a balanced budget. So, and then on this general fund revenue, so the factor that we have on the local use tax is 3821 and on sales tax, it's 103.
Okay, are you finished then, Jen?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to Mike and then to Frank.
Actually, could we check with Nick? I don't know. I think he was wanting to touch on grants, right, Nick? I think you had other questions?
No, no, I had completed for right now. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, I just didn't want to cut you off midstream.
No, you didn't. No, I appreciate you checking in.
All right, Mike, you're on.
I can't use the adage that there's many ways to skin a cat. I think there's just two in this case, right? So if we're going to show revenue, we show the expense because then it should be neutral.
That's right.
But, or to the, to Trusty Burson's point, maybe we have a threshold on where it's, if it's strictly capital over X amount of dollars, then that doesn't show up that way. Five towns I've been in, only two different ways of doing it. It's more or less an either-or. Let's use the speed trailer as a good example. So cutting the speed trailer out of the budget, cool, right? Gone. Save money, good. No grant, also good. But if the speed trailer comes back in, it's actually going to be net us out 10 grand more. So that's, there's strings attached, but there's small strings, right? And we have a, we have a thing coming out of that. So are we comfortable with that? I think I would be for something of that, that type of thing or an IT grant. I'd be, I'd be, that I think is reasonable. If there's no strings on the ILESP stuff to the point of chief's comments, we decide how we want to do that over the next two years. If there's no clawback depending on four years from now, I think that's probably okay to go with that. But there's probably some point to what Trusty Botner said and what Trusty Burson said. If we want to have a, what's the word I'm looking for? An aspirational number for grants and we just put that in there, I don't know if we put that in as, as a, to your point Administrator Rooney, I don't know if you put that in as a revenue because then you do get that artificial sense of. I mean, you could put it as a contingency. You said contingency, that's that term. So you could have a, we could have separate contingency fund for both. Contingency fund and then the contingency fund should trend to zero. Because that's the point we're trying to make. This is not, this is not a recurring revenue stream that we should be looking at year, year after year after. If we, if we want to put the number 2,000, 100,000, whatever it is, and we offset it with expenses, I think that's fine because it, it doesn't change anything other than it being aspirational or a target to Trusty Botner's point, a goal for.
So I understand that, Tim. We would do it both, a contingency number under grant on the positive revenue side. We'd add that. And then we would put back the contingency of a like amount. Whatever we aspirationally say, we think we got a good shot at getting 150,000 in grant, contingency grant. Then on the expense side, we'd add back in the same like dollar amount, meaning that we wouldn't spend.
If we don't get.
The contingency expenditure unless the grant money came in. So to, that would fit to what Nick and both Trusty Burson and Malat have said. We only spend it if we received it.
And on the?
So it won't artificially raise our.
Right. Expectations. We're managing expectations. We're managing everybody's expectation. And on the revenue side, the discussions we had before, the one thing that's still, I think we should definitely 100% consider, we are down to guessing or estimating 140,000 out of Comcast. We've got to look at streaming. I mean, that used to be 300,000. So that has, has crushed and that's one of our capital-focused incomes, so.
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. Which line item were you referring to?
Comcast is line 37.
Franchise fees.
Franchise fees. So, and I, I'm not disagreeing with your trend. The actual, the 23 actual is 162. 24 actual is 153. But if we go back to when we first were getting them, it was, it was 300. And it's, and it's trending towards zero because the streaming is trending the opposite way. Because that's what a lot of us are doing, except for people that live in the bottom of the valley and need it because we have really bad cell service.
Thank you, Mike, for bringing that up.
And that's, video streaming is a user fee and we've got an estimate Tracy's helped us by examining. East Dundee has recently put it in and they're a third the size and they're not nearly as affluent as the homes here. So that'd be a user fee though, that was on that other, last week's list of revenues that we didn't really discuss. We can put the user fees up for discussion next week as well. And that way, the public will know they're front and center on the, on the docket. So we're not doing it secretly.
Perfect. Frank, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, it's all right. I was going to make the same comment that Trusty Malat made as far as treating it like a balance sheet. But I guess my question to the chief is, out of the grants that you received, how many of those expenses would have need to be paid anyway, even if we hadn't gotten the grants? Because you mentioned the Tasers especially, so.
So we are the village. Is actually, I'd say in the last year, somewhat new to the whole grant. What started this, like me and Christina, we went to a free training sponsored by ILESP. So that sort of got the ball rolling on it. And so far of these grants, it would have, it would have come out no matter, like the Tasers. We would only have one of two options. We, if it wasn't for the grant, the village would have had to try to come up with the funds for the Tasers or just take the tool completely away from the officers, which that would be detrimental. I mean, that's a massive tool for our officers. It's a taser or a firearm. There really is no in-between. So we, the village would have had to put the bill out or?
So in essence, the grants saved the village money. It would have been an expense otherwise, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, and Mike, I ran on this particular topic as far as ways to raise more money. And it's not necessarily revenue, as everybody pointed out, but it's a way to cover expense, right? And it does help the village the more we can do. And I guess the surprising part to me to learn is that it was just coming from the police department because there's grants in other areas, as also has been mentioned. And I think we can do a lot more to offset the expense side. It's not actual revenue. I mean, call it what you want. To me, it's money, right, that we need. So if we find more ways to do that outside of the police force as well, I think it's a win-win for all of us.
And to your point, I think you're hitting spot-on. We don't get the grant unless we can demonstrate that we have the expense. And, and that's really how it ties back. You're, you're tracking.
Sorry. We discussed, actually Scott Marquardt gave us a couple of months ago, a nifty tool where we now have a system set up. Christina is on it. Anyone could be added to it. Where it gives us non-stop grant updates, not police, you know, village-wide roads. It doesn't make a difference. So at least we get those in. And the nice thing about Christina is, yes, primarily on the police side, but she also assists on the village side with grants too. So we have made some improvements here to sort of try to get all the grants that are available and then bring it to the board and say, these are out there. If you'd like us to go for it.
And, and the other source, you know, because HR Green is a large, and they cover building departments, staffing in some communities in Illinois, Iowa, Texas. So they're into those different grants for reasons because they are the frontline contracted service provider in some states and communities. So they're tech, really tracking the other departments other than police as well. And Metro West sends us alerts and IML does as well on state grant opportunities. So we do get it from multiple sources.
Okay. And if I can ask one more question, the grants that we've received, how are those documented in the budget or in how they're paid? Because I didn't see anything in the budget or in the past years. So we, we actually received money, right? So where is it? Where does it get placed?
Well, I guess it's going to depend on the grant. Oftentimes, we'll just put it in miscellaneous revenue and we'll offset the expense.
Okay. So, so to Trusty Burson's comment earlier, I think if we highlight it, it creates focus and not just for the police chief and the police department, but it creates focus for everybody to start looking at what other grants are out there that could help pay expenses. So to me, it's, it's a management tool. It's not necessarily a budget tool. But you manage to what you see and you hold people accountable to what you see. If it gets put into a miscellaneous revenue, nobody sees it and you can't manage to it because it's just, it's just stew, right? You know, you want to cook a steak and you want to get paid as if it were a steak. So, a, again, that, I'm just pointing out that what you don't see doesn't get managed.
Okay.
I think Mike was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah. Or do you want to respond to Frank first?
No, just in general, there's been a lot of comments and I'm just listening. Okay, so there's been a lot of enthusiasm for grants, which I am all for. Grants cost money to go get and they cost money to administer. Last budget meeting, I said, we run very, very lean. So there's going to, somebody's going to have to administer this. We'll have to identify somebody. In terms of recording the potential revenue in the budget, and we've, we've discussed before, the budget is a document, kind of a plan of what the village is going to do. We communicate with numbers and with narration. You can put your intentions to pursue additional grants in narration form and use it as a management tool to give people a goal. That's fine. Where I have concern is when you want to put into a number because a number has to be quantified. You have to give me a grant. I have to kind of measure, what is our chances of getting this grant? How much is it going to be? I have nothing in front of me even listing a grant, except for maybe what the chief's grant is going to be for this fiscal budget, which is really why we're here. If you want to do that in the future, I'm okay with that. But the state statute says I have to, my budget has to contain, and I'm going to read this word for word. The budget has to contain estimates of revenue available to the municipality for the fiscal year for which the budget is drafted. Going on, it will conform with good fiscal management practices. I cannot in all good consciousness say, we think we might get a grant, even though it's unnamed, and put it in a numerical format in the budget. I, I just can't in good conscience do it. Can I discuss this with you and say, hey, we think we have these five or six grants, quantify them, put them in a narrative form and use that as a tool to go get it in the future? Absolutely. I, I think that's a phenomenal idea. And that's all I have to say on the matter.
Can I respond to that? Just a quick question.
Sure, go on.
So if you budget for the grant and you budget for the expense, it's a net zero. So if you don't get the grant, you don't pay the expense, but you're still documenting it. So is that possible?
You know, that's hypothetical. If you give me a very specific grant, we can talk about that. All grants are different. Let's maybe use as an example, the chief's grant that we discussed. I believe we are going to incur those expenses, absolutely. If we don't get that grant, I still think we're going to incur those expenses. If we get the grant, if, that's great. We'll, we'll get it. We'll record it. Might not be in the budget, but it'll show up in the financials.
There's a, a cost for the grant writer too, I believe, you know?
That's a fixed cost that we've already budgeted for last year and it's in our base budget and Christina and James and my time managing it with her.
Yeah, because I remember with Open Space or Forest Preserve, we had a specific grant writer and that was another employee cost anyway. to have a grant, specifically a grant writer.
But we already, as last year's budget moved her from part-time to full-time to take on this additional duty. So we've fixed that. I think there's ways we can, we'll bring back that full report and how we put it into the document to not, to fluff it up wrong. We can, we can still have it in as an item that the board is showing it as an aspirational. This is the sum total of what we have applied for going into the budget year. That doesn't mean we're not gonna keep applying for others. And when we get them, we'll just have to make sure that we, you know, document that and have a regular discussion quarterly about where different grants came in, especially after, like, after the Fourth of July, because we should here in late June. So we can, we'll definitely put it in, and we can talk how we show it in the budget line, so it doesn't artificially raise our revenue. That's, that's what Tim and I are concerned about doing. And I think we can still do what the trustees, Nick, Janet, Mike, and now Frank have all said. We'll find a way to do it without violating GFOA standards for the accounts and create an auditor problem later.
You can budget grant revenue and miscellaneous expense.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay, last comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think Janet does too, because we still have more items on the agenda to go through. So whoever's next.
Yeah, go ahead. I appreciate it. I, I don't want to overblow the, the notion of a professional grant writer or a professional grant administrator. This is not the city of Chicago. I know Christina, she's a wonderful person. She works very hard, she's very smart. But she was not a professional grant writer. She went to us, you know, to get some training. She learned, she applied herself, and she's doing a great job getting grants for us. So clearly, you know, you know, any comparably smart, motivated person who gets some training can apply for grants and have some success at it. I don't think we have to envision that this is some sort of professional outside person that we would need to hire. And in fact, you know, this is also, although it feels like it's recent, it's recent only because we had a long drought of grants in the village. But for years, at the beginning, when the village was founded, we applied for grants left, right, and center, and we didn't hire people to do it. So if we, and one of the reasons we're in the positive position that we are, that the finance committee is, is happy about, is because we're not just fiscally conservative, we kind of run this business, or this village like a small business, you know, where we don't necessarily assume that we have to do the expensive thing, and that there might be a cheaper, better way to do it, at least for us. And sometimes that means growing our own. So I'd be very comfortable if trustee Muir wanted to write a technology grant, right? I mean, if anybody here wanted to take a, a grant writing class, as the president would suggest it, I think that'd be great. So I think we can make more of this grant writing opportunity and not, and not have it become a burden to us. I really do.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
We didn't plan that, by the way. We didn't, because that's close to what I was about to say. I, I forgot, there's a third category. There's in-kind. And looking at past President Smith, I mean, our, our comp plan, the first one, and our zoning was, was basically from CMAP, it was just, it was in-kind. So, I mean, we, millions of dollars in benefit, a million dollars in benefit, or a little bit less than that, was, was in-kind. So that doesn't affect the, that's aspirational for sure, but it doesn't affect what we're talking about budget-wise. But it is, it is something that we can still see what's out there for, there was LTAP, right, yeah? LTAP grants or other things like that, that, and those, those just come out of the blue, quote-unquote. So I don't know, we have to, other than the time and effort to put into it, and Patsy wrote several, many of those. I wrote our first MFT, or our first Fouse, because we had to, right, at the time. But now that we've got folks that have some, not necessarily the training's part of it, but also going through the process once, I think, is the part of it. Because then you find out that feedback, and to administrator's point, yeah, the state's actually really good at that. Our state's crappy a lot of stuff, but for this kind of stuff, they do actually.
A great job.
They do, they do a good job, and way better than the feds, the feds on this. So, yeah, you know, many things fed are gonna get us backwards, other than, you know, the ARP stuff that we had. So if we wanted to look at it as a, as a, as a policy for us, because that's what we're looking at, right, it's what policy do you want to make, I guess, that, let's have a, we don't have time to do it by next week, but let's have a kind of, let's come with a rule of thumb, let's come with some, some ballpark. When we think, this type of grant, we want to do this with, these will be the ones that we show. This type of grant is the aspirational stuff. And then this type of grant is always be on the lookout for, always be on the lookout for.
Okay, are we all finished discussing grants, so we can move on?
Can I make one more comment?
You want? Another comment?
Yes, I guess. John, to kind of visually heal me here. I'm, I'm all for the grants. I, I am not gonna be the one going out to get the grants or administering them. I'm just gonna be the, the person that records the revenue. And this is where I need John to heal me. As an accountant, I can't just throw a number in there. It has to be documented, it has to have support. And how I would get that is whoever goes to get the grant, you know, they say, here's the grant, this is what we think it's gonna be, here's the possibility of us getting it, and I would be more than happy to record it. But I can't record something that is, you know, I, I heard somewhere in a discussion, free money. I'm sure John will tell you, as an auditor, you go, oh, what, free money? It's not something that's easy to record, free money. You did say grant in kind, or that, I'd be fine with that, but I just need to be able to document it, that's all. I'm not against it.
We will probably put it, whatever number the budget, seven of you come up with, it'll be line six, Tim. Revenue, miscellaneous revenue. We could increase it. And then we'll list the expense side where the grant, what it's, it's gonna avoid us an expense. Because that's what most of our grants do, is they just supplement with the grant the costs that we already were gonna incur, to your earlier point.
One last comment on the grant writer. You can go to a university that has a major in public administration, and I'm sure they might even have master's degrees, and you can actually do an internship if you wanted to, and have them come in and write the grants and process the grants and.
We have a potential line item for your consideration next week to put twenty-one dollars an hour, a certain number of hours, to get an intern from NIU. Or down at University of Illinois at Chicago has the same program. So we've figured that's the going rate, twenty-one bucks an hour, ten to fifteen hours a week. And we can show you a number, and you can decide to put it in or not. We've anticipated that grants, because Nick made that very clear to me earlier, so we looked at a number.
Okay, we ready to move on? Any more questions regarding the budget for Timothy? Okay.
Are there any other concerns? This is not your last chance as the seven. If something comes to your mind, reach out to Tim and I directly by email, text, or phone call, and we will try to get it fleshed out for next week.
Okay, Kim wants the floor right now, so give her a chance.
Yeah, oh, the only thing, I want to make a comment about the squad car being cut. Okay, it's been at least five years or so, if not longer, that the board, after looking at maintenance and the wear and tear on these vehicles, that one gets done every five years. That's put us on a cycle where one's basically getting replaced every year. At some point, these things, the powertrains and everything, a hundred thousand miles usually, these things get to one-ten, one-twenty, one-forty, and we don't have a backup car, or another car in the fleet, we're looking at more cost to replace it, hence the reason for replacing one of those every five years. They're on a five-year cycle. That's all, the only comment I wanted to make.
Okay, it's a good lead-in to our chief's event, yeah?
I was gonna let the chief make that point next meeting on maintenance versus the turnover and.
Yeah.
I respect everyone, everyone's opinion here, and I understand everyone has different ways they're trying to tighten a budget. The elimination of this squad car is absolutely a horrible way to do it, and let me tell you why. First, I'm not sure where the notion that I've heard comes that we have a massive fleet of vehicles. I guess I could say the positive for the board, I'm trying to find a positive. We have two older cars. There's one of them sitting out front, out there, that's been used for training. It's got a hundred fifty thousand miles on it. We've tried to make as much use out of it as possible. That car's actually being sold in two weeks for approximately five thousand dollars. There is a second car that is actually, hopefully, knock on wood, that is over a hundred thousand miles. Cortland Fire Department actually asked to purchase the vehicle for around fourteen thousand dollars. So hopefully, those two vehicles will go. I understand trying to shrink this deficit that's in the budget, by removing the squad car, you're gonna make a mistake. And let me say this why. I brought this up last year in our budget hearings. Last year, and I can pull the paperwork for you. Our squad cars, here's the list of our squad cars, and I can provide them to you. So we have four functioning squad cars right now. Of those four squad cars, I have one squad car with ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and six miles. I have another squad car with eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six miles. This ain't your guys' personal cars. Like, these cars run twenty-four hours a day, the engines idle constantly. Even if officers try to take care of them, they are going to calls, the brakes go fast, the tires go fast. As soon as this, and trustee Muir actually made a great point, so I'm glad she brought this up, because I would have said it. Our powertrain warranty goes at a hundred thousand miles. So this is what happened recently with one of our squads. At eighty-four thousand miles, a Trans blew on it, a Dodge Durango. Luckily, it fell in the powertrain warranty. It was covered under warranty, which would have cost us almost seventeen thousand dollars. When one of these remaining cars blow an engine, and it costs the village twenty thousand dollars to put a brand-new engine in it, my question is, between that, the increase in maintenance goes absolutely through the roof when you get a car for us that gets anywhere near a hundred thousand miles. When you start thinking about these factors, the increased maintenance costs, right now on an average, we're, I think it's about thirty thousand dollars is what our yearly maintenance budget is. That's tires, that's everything. Like, that is going to double and triple if you keep these cars around. So when, at the cost savings that I understand of the sixty thousand dollars is not going to be a cost savings in the long run. It's not even gonna be close. It's probably gonna cost more. But even one more farther point I have to make to it is, we are trying to attract officers. And in my staff report, there's gonna be an update with this too. So it's actually somewhat going in reverse. We've done good to try to lift our salaries to be as competitive as we can. We pride ourselves on giving uniform flexibility, giving good equipment, having up-to-date equipment. I can't ask officers to come here, even though it's a great environment, they love the community, and say, here, go get in a car with a hundred and ten thousand miles for twelve hours straight, and let me know how you like your shift. Like, it has a huge impact on the officers. We are trying to dig to retract good officers, not bad officers. We've removed officers. You have to look at the big picture on this, and I am good. I am good with stretching out as much as we possibly can, but this one here, like, let's, speed trailer, you guys take it out, God bless. The squad car, that is a bad, bad thing on many levels. But thank you for bringing that up.
Do you want to finish your report?
Chief?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, why don't we finish the bu, are we finished with the budget?
I think, yeah, we're moving on, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, finish your report.
And I apologize for this, but last meeting, I wasn't able to do this report, so it's a little bit long, so I'll try to make it fast. Your March monthly report, three hundred and sixty calls for service, seventeen accidents, eighty-two citations, three arrests. Saturday, April twenty-sixth, the Saturday, the police department hosts two events. One is the annual DEA National Drug Takeback Day. That's here at the Village Hall Police Department from ten AM to two. Officer Tina Stavi's gonna host the event. Residents can come drop off their unused medication for safe disposal. The village is fortunate. A couple years ago, I was able to secure a new medication disposal container out there. Cost the village nothing. So our residents are fortunate where they can drop them off Monday to Friday during normal business hours. Police Department has also volunteered to host the cleanup efforts for the Great Western Trail. This is the thirtieth anniversary of the cleanup event organized by friends of the Great Western Trail. It takes place from Villa Park to Sycamore. Obviously, the Great Western Trail is jurisdiction of the Kane County Forest Preserve, but I felt this was a great opportunity to give back and help with the cleanup, since so many of our residents use this trail daily. That includes me and Koda. Over the last years, we use it frequently. We put out a flyer, we asked for volunteers to assist. The response was great. I had many residents come forward. I had two Boy Scout troops. So this Saturday, the police department, and then all the volunteers, will do the Great Western Trail cleanup. We're gonna do it from Brown Road to the bridge by Hidden Oaks, so it's a long stretch. I just want to thank Mike from KDOT. He offered to donate all the garbage bags and garbage pickers for the event, so we'll get that done Saturday. Tonight, Officer Cusick Carolina is her last night with the police department. She submitted her resignation. So she's going to Lake County Sheriff Forest Preserve Police. I understand her reasoning for it financially, other benefits to it. So I want to thank her for her service to the village, and then obviously, I wish her well in her new opportunity. But there's another full-time officer that has left the agency to go somewhere else, because unfortunately, agent, right, it was said earlier, like, stealing from each other. Like, that's just what it is right now, and everyone is doing it, like, it's just what you gotta deal with, and I understand it financially for her. That's a decision she had to do. I already touched on the grants for you. Detective Oberth, Detective Roskin's been extremely busy in the investigations unit. Lot of background investigations for new candidate hires in the lateral. They're also investigating an increase in thefts, deceptions. We recently had a residential burglary that was pretty substantial for someone that was out of town on vacation. And we also had a drug overdose theft that has become a criminal investigation, so they've been working on that. The department's been receiving a lot of complaints about traffic concerns, including speeding throughout the community. It's pretty typical. It usually picks up in the summer months. We're currently addressing the traffic concerns with the manpower levels we have. I put together a selective traffic enforcement program. Hopefully, this will be able to address the complaints and document it for residents. So if they have questions, what is being done, I'll be able to explain it to them. We are having a big issue, especially in Fox Mill, for slow-speed electric and gas-powered motorcycles and scooters. It is a serious problem. So I've, I've spoken with many residents, especially in Fox Mill. I've spoken with the HOA there. Tons of complaints about it. This is not only juveniles, it's adults too. If you've not seen these things going around town, they absolutely fly. Like, these are not slow-speed. I've had residents hit by these. I've had pets on trails get hit by these. So I've been sort of researching it, reached out to other municipalities. Huntley already has an ordinance in place for this, because they saw this issue a couple years ago. It's pretty good. So hopefully, eventually, I'll bring something to the board for discussion on this, thoughts, suggestions, ideas. But the state of Illinois did actually adopt laws already for this, January first, twenty twenty-five. They went into effect. So we do have regulations on the books. One of the hard parts is enforcing it, especially with juveniles. You have them on the trails. It's really hard. They know they're not gonna stop for the police. I can't take a police car, throw it out on a trail when people are walking, and obviously, we're not gonna chase them. So I have to figure up some creative ways to try to curb the problem that's going on. Summer break for Wasco and Bel Graham begins the end of May. The police department's been requested assist with three events, including AMP Day, May twentieth, the year-end event at Sportsplex on May twenty-seventh, and Clap Out on May twenty-ninth. During the school year, the police department participates in school events, weekly visits, traffic control, traffic enforcement, covering for the crossing guards on their days off, and then obviously, too good for drugs. Usually, when school gets out, this is a little break for the police department, but unfortunately, that's not the case this year. So Bel Graham School is actually gonna be the host location for the entire district for ESY, Extended School Year Learning. Some people would say summer school. Approximately four hundred students and forty to fifty buses a day. Our regular school days, during the regular, has approximately twenty school buses a day. So this, again, is gonna increase complaints in the area, because it is going to be maybe bad with forty to fifty school buses. And it's gonna put an extra strain on the police department to try to deal with it. The only good thing is, it runs from June sixteenth to July tenth, eight AM to twelve PM. I do have a flyer that the school district gave me that we'll put out there, trying to advertise it, so residents aren't caught off guard. District rotates every year. They pick a random school, and they say, every kid in the district that's going to this goes to this school. This year just happens to be Bel Graham.
And unfortunately, not every child rides the bus. There will be a lot of SUV drop-offs and pickups. There will be a lot of SUV, uh, drop-offs and pickups.
There'll be a lot, but my concern is literally doubling our buses from usual twenty to forty to fifty. Our twenty buses now do not fit in there, like, everyone's familiar with Bel Graham. So I'm not quite sure how we're gonna deal with fifty school buses, but we will have to figure it out. And that is into my report.
By the way, Kane County Forest Preserve does not allow motorized vehicles on the Great Western Trail. So I'll contact them, have them check into that.
I can attest, they're there.
I know, I'm sure.
The electric ones are terrifying, 'cause you don't hear them until they write on you.
It's a problem, it is, yeah. Okay.
I was gonna say, next meeting, too, there will be an additional expense that I will be putting forth from the tech committee. It'll range in the fifteen to fifty thousand, but we're still refining some software that can potentially make us more efficient, but I can't really say it's gonna generate more revenue. So I'm still fine-tuning that with the, uh, members of that committee. I think Patsy knows the chair of that one on that topic, Bill. So he's working that, and I should have a number for you to consider on adding, and not just a squad car, but potentially some software in the tech side for next meeting, too. You can vote yes or no.
Sorry, Patsy. She's giving me that look. All right, um, moving on to action items. Motion to approve the minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five of our village board regular meeting, motion. Motion made by Frank, second by Kim.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Benetti.
Aye.
Trustee Muir.
Aye.
Trustee Botner, oh, no, he's absent.
No, he's here.
Oh, he's still here, okay. Uh, trustee Burson.
Aye.
Trustee Mallett.
Aye.
And trustee Hasenberg.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash fifteen, authorizing financial institution signatories for the village. That would be Mike and myself, since Mike is my president pro tem.
And finance trustee.
And a senior trustee.
Finance trustee. He's a finance trustee.
Finance trustee. All right, um, I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Burson, second by Frank, roll call.
Trustee Burson.
Aye.
Trustee Benetti.
Aye.
Trustee Botner.
Aye.
Trustee Mallett.
Aye.
Trustee Muir.
Aye.
Trustee Hasenberg.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I'm going to pull, uh, ordinance twenty-five dash ten for this evening, it's regarding the budget. Down to discussion items, potential annexation agreements, this'll be Mark and Carmen.
Yes, uh, I know there's been some discussion, it's been out in the public already. The one that Carmen and I are ready to present to you, though, is regarding some existing homeowners and property owners on Harley Road. Heading south on the village is, uh, they're not currently in the village, but they're willing to sign a, uh, pre-annexation agreement that we'd be putting forward for you to do a review of at the next meeting. And, uh, you can either pass it at that meeting, or you can pass it at the first meeting in May. And then at a future meeting, we'll be discussing with Shodin, developer slash builder, for the one thousand acres that was Polty Homes on the Ryan property that was three thousand, up twenty-four hundred to twenty-six hundred units that was gonna be in St. Charles last year, it's that same land. And they are potentially buyers of that same acreage. And we'll show you some details, 'cause, uh, we've had discussions with the Shodin representatives already. So we'll probably possibly be bringing that forward. And we could even discuss the, the, the legal matter of Brundage Road if it's available to us. And I'll leave that to Carmen at the next meeting. So we want all the trustees and the public to understand, it was gonna be, say, twenty-five hundred units. The pre-agreement we have talking with Shodin, it's gonna be nine hundred. And there's gonna be four hundred and fifty acres, minimum of donation slash sale to Open Space Forest Preserve of everything north of the Campden Blackberry Township. All the homes look to be in the Blackberry Township, which is the Geneva School District. So no one is gonna get an indirect tax increase by it. And we're putting together what we legally can, to what Patsy Smith spoke of, with a development agreement.
SSA.
SSA for the roads. And we're gonna do some other in-kind dollar contributions for the additional police that will have to be part of an annexation agreement, that we're gonna try to cover some of our additional costs. And that'll be phased in, 'cause we can't charge something when there's no homes or no people to police, so, or no roads built. So we're gonna work with that, and I hope to be able to bring Mr. Shodin, his representative, Dave, or, uh, David Patzel, at an early meeting in May. But we've had some preliminary talks, there's no real secret on that, that it would be much better than the twenty-five hundred to get nine hundred units. And keep it in the Geneva School District, so you don't get an indirect tax increase, because the school district says they need a new teacher, a new building, new bus. That won't occur.
And I think ninety acres of open land along Mill Creek, which is really good.
Yeah, so we'll bring that forward at upcoming, probably the May meeting, 'cause we wanna keep the budget to the budget primarily, except this annexation agreement with Harley Road that should be ready next week. Anything else, Carmen?
No, we have, uh, I think, a handful of, um, individuals who own property, as Mr. already said, along Harley Road that we're negotiating agreements with now. So I think, uh, five agreements in total. Some were fairly close to terms that they've agreed to. Many of them are still waiting to hear back from. The agreements will all be very similar in form, with some individual changes with regard to specific characteristics of their own property. So we'll, we'll have those for your review fairly soon.
But the, the key is, it's a friendly annexation, it's not a forced annexation.
Okay, moving on, additional items from president, trustees, attorney. Go ahead, Mike.
Just got a notice this, this morning, um, or actually, lunchtime. Probably has the website. From KDOT, cover repair work scheduled to begin on the Fox Road between School Road and Fox Creek Drive, week of the twenty-eighth, weather permitting. Though the work will require a single lane closure of the road, one lane northbound and southbound will still be provided through the work zone for the duration of the project. For the safety of the motor and public, blah, 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 the planned work, assisted pavement removal, structural repair of concrete, and resurfacing with an anticipated July twenty-fifth, oh, sorry, July twenty twenty-five completion, weather-dependent. Fortunately, the school buses go in from Fox Mill Boulevard, so I'm gonna add that to the website. Sorry, chief.
His headache just got worse. All right, anything else?
We'll send out the chief's admonishment of the more buses and this on community counts tomorrow.
Can I just say something?
Sure, Carmen's gotta count up.
I want to also personally thank Chief Levand, Koda, and Officer Stavi for coming to visit the PAC one fifty Boy Scout troop at Wasco School a couple of weeks ago. Had a couple of kids of my own that happened to be there as well. That's why you saw me run into the meeting very quickly that night, um, as it started. But the troop had a wonderful, or the PAC had a wonderful time, and look forward to having some of them come in in the near future to hopefully say the pledge of allegiance and present you with a, a thank you.
I didn't see you in a uniform. Just saying.
I have so many night meetings that my wife has the uniform. You'd be surprised, the amount that I've missed, yeah.
All right, we have no need for closed session and motion to adjourn. Moved by Treese and second by Janet. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Nick, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you as well, thanks for doing the work.
Thank you, Nick.